...of the Cool School, to sell the Cool Schools. So, we, we sent the request of proposals out with an initial deadline that would not align with the board's schedule to consider for inclusion in the town meeting warrant for, for the special town meeting. However, Friday afternoon, Chairperson of the Cool School Working Group, Lindy Gier, asked me if I would draft an addendum to the request of proposals that would extend the date of submission for three weeks, which would be negating my intentions of asking the board to, to change the schedule. However, this week, mostly in conversations with Becky Moska, who, who I, you know, kind of, she's the keeper of the schedule, so to speak, in preparation for town meeting. And particularly, I don't have a finance director right now, he's on vacation. So, I've not been able to, to really move forward very much with my proposed amendments to the revised budget for FY20. So, I, it would be greatly beneficial to me to have an additional week to prepare the, the proposed town meeting warrant for the special town meeting to give to the selectmen. So, and, but my intention is still to let the board see it twice, so to speak.
So, do you want the 10th, or no?
I do want the 10th.
So, cancel the 3rd, schedule the 10th?
Right.
And so, it has a motion, a motion to approve the revised meeting schedule to the Board of Selectmen as presented.
Which is that change.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is everybody okay with the 10th?
Well, I'm not gonna be here, but, yep.
I thought you weren't gonna be here the 3rd.
And the 10th. I'm gone for almost two weeks.
Oh, so either way.
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
Yeah, I can make, I can change something and make it work. We do a seven o'clock start, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, Armin cannot attend, but we'll keep him...
Thank you.
So, all those in favor of the change? All right.
All right, so, no, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Now, are we doing the draft list of proposed articles, or?
I was only sort of, I'm trying to keep the board aware of where we are with the, with the draft. They, they're all, they are certainly in draft, including the minimum property standards, which have been long developed, but the sponsor comments may be adjusted and whatnot. But, but I wanted, in case there was any input from the board at this time, I was providing you the current list that we have, which, as you noticed, does not include us as a petition. So, that may be included later, may not.
Okay. All right, so, there's nothing for that to really do?
No.
All right.
Nope. Yeah, that's it, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to get the chance to, to the board to see it. I've also been providing this to the finance committee, so they can continue to review it as well.
All right. I don't see any firemen or chiefs or anyone here, so...
No, so, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to clarify that I was not, I was not sure on, on the exact direction of the board when I, when I brought this to the, for the consideration of the board, for establishing the Fire Station Building Committee. But, some of the guidance I, I did get was to include the capital planning committee in the communities in regards to that plan. I also wanted to point out to the board that I do now have, the town does now have a capital planning committee.
Right.
A large, a significant role of, of a proposed Fire Station Building Committee would be figure out the funding. But, now I have a capital planning committee. So, it would be certainly an overlap at a minimum. I'm not saying that there's not a role for a Fire Station Building Committee, but it, the urgency may not be there right now. So, I, I'm just looking for direction from the board. Would you, would you like to establish a Fire Station Building Committee? Would you consider the charge that I have? And, and then we can advertise for memberships.
So, the capital planning, basically what you're suggesting, because their role is gonna be looking at funding, basically, the fire, but so that means the fire chief is not gonna be involved, involved during the process now?
No, well, I suspect the capital planning committee, and I've already discussed with them, that they would be inviting representatives of whatever the capital needs are. So, the fire chief, in that case, whatever the other, the other needs are to, you know, if the capital planning committee adopts a procedure of applications, so if they, if they, which I, is typical of capital planning committees, where you have to submit, even the school department does it, you have to submit what you want. And, and then they, you would have to present, similar to what you do. You have the representatives, representatives of the application, give their spiel, and try to justify it. So, the fire chief would have a role in that, certainly.
So, I would assume that the fire chief would be a part of this committee?
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, oh, this Fire Station Building Committee?
When it's created.
Sorry, yes, I'm sorry. I was referring to the...
Well, that was my point, 'cause you, based on what I'm hearing you say, is that you have a capital planning committee, you really don't need a...
No, for, if you don't, he...
At this point, when you look at the charge...
It's not a rush.
When you look at the charge that Greg had written up for the Fire Station...
Yeah, I know, I read it, yeah.
It included finding a funding mechanism.
Right.
Now, the funding mechanism is going to be turned over to...
To the capital planning.
Capital Planning Committee. So, therefore, the Fire Station Committee, Building Committee, which will eventually be necessary, but at this point, because it's not needed for finding a funding, it's not necessary to do it at this stage.
We can do it anyways, I'm just looking for the direction of the board.
I'm, I think it's a good idea to start one. So, oh, okay. So, I mean, I could make a motion to approve the charge for a Fire Station Building Committee as provided, and ask for a second.
Second?
I mean, I, I think we need a Fire Station Building Committee, and...
But, do you need a committee that's charged to find the funding mechanism?
For funding, right.
Or is that a role for the...
Well, they could put, they could play a dual role.
I don't think we should limit it to one group.
I, I totally agree with you.
What should be involved in the funding of the...
Right, 'cause they may come up with something that'd be helpful.
I think it needs to be a broad conversation.
Okay.
Including, you know, us and, and the finance committee.
Okay.
I think every group needs to be involved.
And I, I don't mind serving as a liaison, or sitting, serving on that committee, if it's okay with you guys.
Okay.
Got it.
From the Fire Station Committee.
Yeah.
Am I okay with that?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions about the charge, or anything else? Just please forward. All those in favor?
All right, very good.
Now, can I, since we're on that topic, and I'll make it short, I don't know if you guys are aware, that the McDonald's have donated a banner with their rendition, the picture of the new firehouse. So, similar to what they put on the Gruber building. So, it'll, has the picture of what the firehouse is gonna look like. And that was something that we had talked about at the EDC meetings, about being better at marketing and, to the town, about what's coming. Things like, for example, with the Gruber thing, it's a rendition of what's coming, and it's making a conversation in town. People are talking about it. So, they donated this banner, it's pretty big, and it's a, it's, it's something that could be put up by, by the town.
I feel like it's so premature, though, because we have no funding source for it. So, by advertising what this is could look like, we have no way to pay for it.
Correct. That's, that's the point you're making. I think from a marketing perspective, you're selling it to the town of what the funding is gonna go. What happens if we do go to the town, and we're asking for, you know, a, a debt exclusion, you know? So, now, at least the, the town will know what is it that we're asking them for. So, they could see at least the building. We're selling it to the town, basically what the place is gonna look like.
I mean, I don't...
Nobody knows what it's gonna look like.
I don't have an objection to the fact that we need a fire station at some point, but I personally don't stand behind, like, the endeavors to get it right now. I just don't think the money's there, there's any way to get it, or that a debt exclusion is the way to go. So, I mean, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that kind of...
No, I understand.
That was part of the discussion we had the last meeting.
Pushing it.
Where you had brought up, maybe we need to have a discussion about whether or not this is even the time to...
Right.
And I echoed, saying, whether or not I agree with it or not, yes, we probably need to have that discussion. And I think we probably do need to have that discussion. Because if, if we, as a board, don't believe that it is viable as an option at this point, because we can't afford a debt exclusion, and we don't have any other funding sources that are going to work, well, then let's say that, and make it, you know, evident that, yeah, we're supportive of the project at some point, if that's the way the board wants to go.
Right.
That's a discussion, I think, that needs to be had, rather than continue to just move it along, kick it down the, kick the can, and not do something. Whether we're gonna do it, or we're not gonna do it, or we're gonna say, okay, we now need to establish a five-year plan, or whatever the plan number may be, so that we know what, where we're headed.
So, this, so this is the point I'm trying to make. We already went to two steps. We purchased the land.
Yep.
We spend the money on architectural design, which was like $800,000, or something like that, I believe, close to that. So, we spend a lot of money already.
Yep.
So, what, we wanna make sure that we're not just putting this on a back burner forever, and then that we're never gonna talk about it, because we don't, we don't, we can't fund the funding, you know, vehicle. We have to be creative. The planning, you know, the capital planning committee is gonna be in place, and hopefully the fire committees, Station Committee will be in place, and maybe they'll come up with something within a year. The longer we wait, the more it's gonna cost. So, that's all we have to keep in mind. If, if, if the select, you know, men here are saying we don't need a fire station, that's a different story. But, if we do need a new fire station, so if we do need a fire station, then we gotta find a creative way of funding the fire station.
We need a way, we need a way to pay for it.
Pay for it, correct, yeah.
But, I think it's a discussion we, we need to have, you know, maybe that next, the next meeting about, you know, that particular, but as far as a banner...
Yeah.
I don't, it says coming soon.
It could be soon anytime.
No, I think that thing says coming soon. You put, if you put something up that says coming soon, people are gonna expect to see shovels in the ground and everything pretty soon.
That's not true. I mean, a 115 is not gonna happen soon either.
But, that's a privately funded development.
I know, I understand.
That's not us, that's not us...
I mean, just, just so you know, I didn't, when, when the McDonald's donated, they did that from their own, they didn't say, you know, you guys want it or not, they just donated it.
I know, I just think, I mean, I mean, that would have been a conversation, I feel like, for the EDC to say, like, okay, if you're gonna spend money on the town, I can think of a lot of other ways they could have spent the money for the banner that we could have used right now, to enhance, like, the downtown, or something.
I just don't know that a banner that says coming soon is, is appropriate for a fire station, that we don't have any idea today that we're gonna...
All right, so maybe down the road, if we get to a point, and then you could put it up at that time.
We put it up, and we know what we're doing. I think it's feasible.
No, 'cause to, to Greg's point, he had said that, well, the construction company will put it up, but that's not the same. So, that's, that's a different type of thing, that once we know the construction is going in. But, okay, so...
We have it, yeah.
Then let's, let's, as we get closer, then we'll just put the, if it's okay with everybody, we'll put the banner as we get closer to a, a solution, to funding.
Hopefully, sooner rather than later.
I wanted to find, speaking of the fire station, I wanted to find an article that I had, I had actually yanked out of the paper, and I don't know if I could find it quickly. But, you know, we had been asking for a long time about, here I found it, about whether or not there's funding available from the state level. And repeatedly, we'd heard, no, 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 you know, no funding. And then I came across this article out of the Metro West Daily News, that says that Ashland had gotten a $25 million bond secured by Senate President Karen Spilka for a public safety project in Ashland.
I've never heard of that. I believe you, but...
Yeah, I'm reading it. What happened was, the governor, in his most recent budget, the 20, the five-year capital plan from 20 to 24, didn't fund this $25 million, or $25 million bond.
Uh-huh.
So, the article says, "The town's $30 million plan to construct a public safety building has hit a multimillion dollar stumbling block."
Yeah.
Town officials were expecting the state to pay for the majority of the project in the form of a $25 million bond that was secured by Senate President and Ashland resident, Karen Spilka.
Yeah.
But, the public safety building project is not included in Governor Charlie Baker's five-year capital plan from fiscal 20 through 24.
Right.
And Ashland Town Manager Michael Herbert is unsure when or if the state will release the money.
Right.
So, my point is, we've been told, oh, there's no money, no money, no money. Well, there was money for Ashland, but it was pulled.
So, I, that, that may be true, but I, I used to be the guy that did the capital spreadsheets for EOPS, the Executive Office of Public Safety, and I was, I, yeah.
You were the one who pulled that, weren't you?
I would have been the guy that, I did delete on the cell that had the number there. And, and so that's, I, from that direct experience, although it's been a couple years since I worked for Administration and Finance, it would have surprised me that, that the, at the time, the Baker administration would have, would have approved municipal, because, because it's really difficult to say, why would Ashland be more deserving of that than Maynard?
Because Karen Spilka lives in Ashland, is why it got on there.
That may be true. But, that, but from a objective stance, where you're trying to compare all the towns and cities across the Commonwealth, if I was an analyst, I would have the same recommendation.
Oh, I, I'm not suggesting you wouldn't have, and, you know, it's, it's clearly an earmark for, for Karen's...
So, I, I would be, I, I do not think that is a, I don't, I, I'm not sure on the viability of that being an option for the town of Maynard, because I, because if Karen's...
And I would never suggest we would get $25 million, or whatever.
That was my comment to him earlier today.
If we get $25 million...
$25 million, we would even give money back.
But, if there's, if, apparently Karen Spilka was able to get the governor's ear to get that put into his, or to, had they had the idea that it was included in the governor's...
It's just an addition to the spreadsheet. So, so it went, it went to, it went to a guy like me, that used to sit there, and, and then, you know, do discussions with both the House and Senate Ways and Means Committees. They say, this is our list. And then you take that list, and you add to the spreadsheet. It's, it's not, it was, it was probably not as formal as your, as your...
They seem to be, have, have been relying upon it for their...
Right, and I think, and I, if, I, I would have recommended against it. If I, if I, if that was been proposed to me, I would have said, that sounds unlikely. But, that's, but I, but I appreciate the effort. And I, and I, and I would, and I think that Senator Eldridge and Representative Hogan would also like to be able to put forth the same effort. I, I'm, I just, I don't know how viable that option is.
Yeah, I'm not, and I'm, I'm not disparaging the, our representatives, I'm just...
No, no.
Suggesting that perhaps there are opportunities out there, even though that $25 million was, one was pulled, perhaps if it was a $2 million one, it wouldn't have been pulled.
That's fair, that's fair. $25, that's true.
It's quite a deal to get a $30 million public safety building for $5 million.
Yes.
I don't, I don't, I don't know if I wanna see what it looks like.
Town size.
Are we up to the town administrator report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, my gosh.
It's a beauty.
It's a beauty, yeah, it's long.
So, I won't go into it, 'cause it is long. But, to the credit of all the staff, they, they provide a lot of good information, so I encourage the public to review it. I do wanna give one, one revision or addition to it, Mr. Chairman. So, I, I, out of, out of a joke, months ago, I said, that railing better be up at the Memorial Park, in time for the 29th summer concert. And as, if you drive by now, you'll see that, sure enough, the fence is still there, and the railing's not complete. So, I called the contractor today to see what he would tell me about it. He says that his subcontractor, who is installing the railing, intends to do it by Thursday. But...
So, the fence is gonna come down?
So, that's what the contractor told me, is that he would put the fence down. But, it's, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman...
That project has been ongoing for, for a small little ramp.
I...
Doesn't seem like anyone works on it, though.
I agree with your frustration. I, I'm also frustrated by it, so...
Railings up, though.
Yeah, railings, that's what he just said.
Partially, partially, the fence is up, but not the railing.
Fence is covering the railing.
But, no, the railing itself, so the, so if you, if you look at it, it has like the...
Right.
Like the little hook, little holder for the actual railing, but the railing's not on there yet. The fence is up.
Oh, the hook, 'cause, oh, I thought it was the railing.
So, that, I mean, we're using different terms.
They didn't put, they didn't put the railing on top of the, the stands, or the...
They'll have to do that, yes. So, that's not done yet, and then they'll have to take the fence down. But, DPW went by today, and they mowed it, so that, we're trying to make preparations otherwise.
I would be concerned if they tried to put it up, quote unquote, by Thursday, that if people are hanging out...
Rushed it, yeah.
And, you know, whatever, that, I don't know how sturdy it will be, but...
I mean, no, it's, I mean, that's true. It should be, that's true, but it should be welded on. And you're not wrong. And, and the, the contractor told me, he, he would only take the fence down if he felt like it was complete.
And then we could sue and have payment for our fire station.
Right.
Right!
No.
Two things to do.
Mr. Chairman, if, I'll, I'll continue if you, if you allow. It's just that, I just wanna mention that we are continuing developing the proposed FY20 amendments to go to the special town meeting. You can see that some of my recommendations, but town staff was vetting that, and there will be further conversations with town staff, as well as the school department. We have to solve $172,000, and I only have about half that right now, so...
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
That's $172,000. That the town has to do the cuts, or the schools' part of that cutting?
So, I asked for that direction from the Town Budget Subcommittee, and maybe the chair could give.
Well, actually, so we have a meeting on Thursday, but, but my, my, the last communication we had with Lydia Clancy, who's the, the, one of the representatives on the committee, was that they were going to go back and look at their budget as well, because they do recognize the fact that this is, you know, this is there.
Were there because of them.
Well, no, and it's not. It's just the fact that it's, that they are aligned share of the budget as well, so it's not fair for the, for...
Okay.
Our side to try to take that much. And it's not sides, but it's just a matter of those two different budgets. So, I don't know what they've come back with, so hopefully...
By the way, I look at it, if we were, if we're a 60/40 type of a pie formula, then that's the way the cut should be too, 60/40.
So, Mr. Chairman, then the, the last item is just to, to, we, we got the notification from Ron Calabria, that he was stepping down from the, from that planning committee. And Assistant Town Administrator Megan Zamudo is, is actively looking for a replacement.
Well, it won't be me.
Did I say it won't be you?
It won't be me.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, what are we at, to the town administrative view? Get that to go. Pass it over to that guy.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Let's see, let's see, let's see.
Your secret envelope.
Scary envelope.
He's like, I do not want that.
Justine volunteered to go through the whole thing.
What?
Did not, sudden.
So, I figured it came out bad. I'm not happy with that.
What?
It came out bad, wasn't it?
Yeah, it definitely didn't come out the way it was supposed to.
That's okay.
They shifted.
No, that's how, that's how it looked when I looked at it, too.
It's not how it is on my computer. I'll look it up, 'cause I don't, I don't trust it, in the machine. Telling ya, ah, that stinks. But, anyway, um, yeah, it's not bad. So, we, you know, we submit this respectfully, on behalf of the board, I did. So, what happened was the, there's a form that the town has used for years, consisting of 10 categories that we, that suggests, request a score based on a 1 through 4 grading or rating system. And the numbers on the 10 categories are below, and in all the categories, it says that our town administrator met the job standards. I think there was, there was also a, a group of comments in, under each, each of the categories, and I guess, I, should I read this? Should I read this in, or?
No, make it...
Enter for the record?
It, it is public record, but it, no, you don't have to read it now.
So, I, I think, you know, it, does anybody have any comments they wanna make when we're here with Greg, or just allow Greg to read it on his time? And I, I'm, you know, I guess I'll, I just guess, from, from my standpoint, overall, it's, it's a, it's a good review. There's, there's some shortcomings that we've discussed a little bit, you know, people-wise and those type of things, I think. But, you know, one of the, a couple of things that stood out as strengths are, at least in my opinion, and everyone else's, is that we, you know, we find you to be someone who's very, you know, high of character, and honest, honesty, integrity, and professionalism. And I think we all appreciate that. You know, we also appreciate your enthusiasm for the job and your involvement in the community, because, you know, I think we recognize that, you know, you are at a lot of things that prior TAs weren't at, and things that you're not required to go at, but you take an active part in the community, and that's greatly appreciated by, I think, the five of us, as well as many of the people in the community who see you there and recognize who you are and what you're doing, and it's, it's an appreciated thing. The, the overall assessment also, that's, those are some of the strengths that were noted. Communication is also considered a strength, although, you know, the world is never fully satisfied with anyone's communication, but I think that the communication that we get from you is vastly superior to some of the communications we received in the past. And it's, it's definitely a positive attribute. And then we give the, there was also, you know, areas for improvement and concern, and I think it's, you know, some of us were concerned and thought, you know, you need, you're still striving to find a, a true comfort level with some things, and in some areas, and that you could, you know, we, we think that we are secure enough in you, and you should feel secure enough with us, that we, you know, you could make decisions that you don't sometimes make, and you refer back to us, and you, you know, you can...
Okay.
I think that, you know, see, you make those decisions, which is acceptable to us, 'cause we think you have the capability to make them.
Okay.
And we were, and that's, you know, and then the others are, you know, we, we're all, everyone's always looking out to long-range planning, and financial planning, and specifically financial planning, for some of the reasons we've already discussed tonight, fire stations. Now, we're talking more repairs for the Green Meadow and that type of stuff. And then, you know, the final thing on, on the overall assessment, that was a written piece, it was two, only two of us commented, or two people commented, and I think that, you know, you were hired in mid-2018, July, August of 2018, and, and in my opinion, you, you came into a situation that was bad, and it proceeded to get worse and worse. And I think, and others think that, you know, was those things were taken first, that you did a great job handling some of those things, and, and resolving some of the issues that arose early in your tenure in the town of Maynard. And to your, to your credit, you did it, you know, with solid communication with the community, with, with everybody involved in the process, the schools. Aaron, when he was here, and, and his group, and, you know, everybody was involved in the process, and that's because you got them involved. And that's appreciated. And, you know, definitely, we realize that there's a learning curve in this. And I think, you know, as you continue to attack the learning curve with the enthusiasm that you do, I think we'll get past those things. And I think that, I'm confident in saying that we're all looking forward to watching, you know, you succeed and surpass all of our expectations.
Excellent.
You can, we can, we'll enter into the record, and anyone that wants to read it. If you have any comments or concerns, you can get back to us, and we'll discuss it. But, overall, positive, I think everybody, you know, each of us is comfortable with you, that we go in and sit and talk with you, and if there's issues, we bring them up, and they get resolved, and that's, the comfort level is there already, so. Does anybody have anything to add to the preview, to what my words are, the notes?
I think the only comments I would make is, I think the majority of my comments and review aspects dealt with just the learning curve aspect.
Sure.
And the, the fact that, that there are things that I think, to your credit, you need, you know you need to develop and work on, and, and learn. The one, if I wanna say criticism, the one critique...
Yeah.
Or thing that I would ask, is that you become a bit more confident in your, in your willingness to give us your opinion on certain things, even though it might not be your decision at the end of the day.
Sure.
But, to tell us, for example, if we have a marijuana store here, whether or not you think it's a good, a good situation. That's my perspective.
Didn't wanna overstep, but...
I would like for your thoughts on how you think that might, a particular issue might impact us as a community, and what your perspective is on things, so that we can sort of take that into consideration. And, you know, perhaps it's been intentional, but I, I sense that sometimes you hesitate to give your thoughts, because you think it's our decision to make.
That's exactly the truth.
Which it certainly is.
Yes.
But, your input is important to us, as is Megan's, because, you know...
You guys are here, you're here in the front line, yeah.
And you're, you, you have a different perspective, perhaps, than we do, and can give us your thoughts. So, I would encourage you to begin to think along the lines of, you know, giving your thoughts on what your recommendation might be. And, you know, sometimes we might snap back at you and say, no, you're wrong. Other times, we might say, great idea.
Sure.
Those are my thoughts. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you.
And the one thing, I think you and I had the conversation, where as you go along, you're going to start formulating your own team. And I think a great example is Justin. I mean, if you start bringing people like that, and Megan, obviously... As you start bringing your people around, you surround yourself with your team, I think that'll also make... help you.
Oh, absolutely.
And your position, I think it's going to... it's going to be important. I think over time, I think you'll do that.
Okay.
All right.
Great, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
See you next year.
Are you open to hearing a public comment?
Absolutely.
Is it about Greg?
You're not actually the public, but go ahead. You're not public. You go ahead. Ken Estherbrook, should you have a finance committee?
So I guess the... just the one thing I would say is, and I think Justine would probably agree with this, is that the town budget subcommittee did was on it last year as well, would not be working as well as didn't without the active participation of Greg and with Mike Guzzo. So the fact that the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen and the school committee have such good communications among the three boards is largely due to the fact that that town budget subcommittee is working so well, and that's... that is an important effort that, you know, two of you see, but perhaps the rest of you didn't see, so I just wanted to add that in.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think we squeezed it in.
I'd like you to be here.
Hey, it's date night.
It's date night. We can do whatever we want.
I want to add in, you know, you have so much direct interaction with Greg, and just as one of the chairs of the committee here, he's been so responsive to our committee. When we hit roadblocks, he weighs in with great ideas to kind of help get us past the hump, and he's smoothed over a lot of edges. I mean, I'm so excited that he's our town administrator, and, you know, if I was rating him, I'd be getting an A-plus, so I'm just really excited.
We don't have that on our... it only goes up to four.
A four-plus.
Four-plus.
Yeah. I only realized that when I saw the agenda that he'd been here for one year, and I thought, oh, I need to send this guy a card, because he's just been a home run so far.
Nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very nice.
He'll pay you later. Don't worry, he's going to send you cards.
He'll pay you later, says the group. We'll deliver the soda to him.
True.
All right, so, um... so anyways, I don't really have anything tonight other than that, that stuff that we've already got to, except there isn't one more motion, and that's to approve the goals for fiscal year 2020 of the Board of Selectmen as presented. So do you have a second for that one?
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. Is everybody okay with the goals that we approved earlier?
Yeah.
And thank you for taking them, Megan.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. That's very good. Board member reports. Mr. Deere, back here again?
I'm not going... oh, Greg, question, because I know we don't have time to do that tonight, the trash thicker thing.
Yeah, so I've got it as public document, but I think I expect us to hear from the town budget subcommittee, what they think.
We're talking on Thursday.
Can we put it on the agenda for the...
Yeah, I was going to say, if possible.
Yeah. The finance committee also reviewed, but I'll be looking for direction.
And then the other thing is, I think I already... you already asked my... I answered my questions on a parking meter and stuff, so that's good, but you're going to look...
There are more answers coming.
There are more answers coming on the actual...
Yes.
Okay. And the other thing, Mr. Chairman, is, is it possible that at the end of the meetings, you can ask us if there's anything that, like Melissa just did, we can put something on your agenda that we might want to have on your agenda that, you know...
Yeah, this is the time.
Thanks. All right, just...
Yeah, you can. You guys, absolutely. Anybody that wants to add something to the agenda is...
Awesome. Thanks.
I'm not restricting. I'm not restricting you. I'm not restricting the rest of us.
Come on.
Couple things. First, good luck to the school department and the beginning of the school year today. From all I heard, my one student in the Maynard School Department is that things went very well.
Smoothed.
The second thing I wanted to comment on was, for those who stayed up to continue to watch this exciting meeting, is that certainly...
They're sleeping already.
The events of yesterday, or late Sunday night, whatever night it was, I hope don't put... get people down about our community and about what Maynard is all about. In fact, I think that the reaction that we saw from so many of our residents and their... the fact that they were upset, and the fact that they were, you know, they sort of rallied around the businesses that were affected, is a testament to what the community is really about. So apparently, one individual who wanted to do damage to our community and try to tear things apart and hurt certain businesses is not going to tear apart what Maynard is really all about. So I think it's important that we realize, too, that the police department is doing their job, and from what we gather, I mean, nothing's definitive yet, but they're making progress, and I think that there will be a resolution to this fairly quickly.
Yeah, I hope so.
So, you know, congratulations to them.
Right.
And I also, you know, to the businesses that were affected. They know that Maynard's residents care, so...
It's funny, because at 5:30 in the morning, I emailed you saying, what's going on at that place?
I'm glad you did.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Melissa?
My only request is that you just keep a surprise in the situation and any updates to the downtown situation.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
We're trying to be careful.
I know, because of, yeah, the situation, which I completely respect. That's all I have.
Justine?
Hi.
Hi.
You have a Justine list?
Your turn.
I have a list. No, I don't.
Your board is looking at you.
I know. She's already wrapping up. She's like, we're done.
She's acting, wrap it up.
No, yes, I want to echo David in saying congratulations and good luck to all the students in the Maynard Public Schools and in the Maynard community. You know, we have a great group of teachers and parents and staff and kids, and so look forward to a good year. And tomorrow, we have the Hometown Heroes meeting, 6:30 at Town Hall. And on Thursday, we have Budget Subcommittee meeting at 7 o'clock. And after that Budget Subcommittee meeting, I think I'm going to share at least the first round of... I'm going to start sharing the minutes with the board, so I'll probably forward it to you and have you send it out to the board, just because Lydia Clancy is taking the minutes on them, and she does an amazing job on the minutes, and so everybody can kind of get an overall picture of what we're discussing.
That'd be great.
During it. So I just figured that that would be... that would be helpful. That's all.
Did I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Next meeting is September 10.